All right, thank you. Roll call.
Nelson.
He's here.
Orison. Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed. Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to thank. It's out of control before we begin. I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Ron Hanson for running the meeting last time. Right, two times ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
So, thanks again. A couple of housekeeping items. Brian has requested a couple of minutes at the end, after the public comment, to go over the new system for online reservations and payments. Is that right, Brian?
Payments.
Payments, just payments. Okay, so be prepared for that. And then for the press and the public, I will have some comments and updates related to the motorcycle fatality that happened over the weekend in Spencer. So with that, we will proceed to the consent agenda. Item 3A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of May 3, 2021, and the special city council meeting of May 10, 2021. B licenses, approve renewal on Class E liquor, Class B wine, Class C beer, and Sunday sales for Walgreens. Renewal of Class C native wine with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Century Farms Distillery temporary outdoor service area extension for Century Farms Distillery for June 11, 2021, for a special event. Temporary outdoor service area extension for 513 Bar on June 19, 2021, for a special event temporary outdoor service area for the Iowa Project Brewing Company for May 22, 2021, and June 27, 2021, and addition of outdoor service for Takeria El Tapatio for Sidewalk Cafe, all subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds and budgeted transfers for the month ending of April 30, 2021. D is a motion to approve Jessica Wright, HR manager, as City of Spencer Iowa governmental healthcare plan board representative. E is a motion to approve purchase of three onboard computers for the fire department from Solutions for $12,597. CAD link and setup from Streetwise for $2,400, and hardware and setup from Kel-Tec for $3,600. This is a CIP budgeted project.
Want to introduce that?
First by Bill. Second by, was it Lauren?
Lauren.
Any discussion on these items? All right, hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four, public hearings. 4A is a public hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2021 sewer structure rehabilitation project. I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none, Mayor.
Do we have any oral comments against? See, none. Have we received any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing closed. Item 4A1 is a resolution finally approving and confirming plan specifications and form of contract for the 2021 sewer structure rehabilitation project.
I move the final approval.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Tom. Discussion on this?
What timeframe are we, are we looking at or starting these projects? I mean, Ross, I know we've got a lot of projects that are, that are coming up on this here or there, so maybe you can go over, over the start times and when all these contracts are done after today.
Yeah. I'll start with, good evening, everyone, first of all, yes. I'll start with this one. Appears that the completion date is November 15 for this project.
Okay.
So, you know, I would anticipate, I think maybe Brian said he talked to the contractor and they were thinking around the August time period, so.
So later in the season will be?
Yep, yep. Probably later in the summer, yeah, really fall, so.
Okay, all right.
And as a reminder, this is a, this is a manhole rehab and lift station rehab project. I think there was 29 different manholes to repair and two lift stations, so. Good question.
Thank you, Ross.
How are we, one thing, sorry, but how are we coming on? I mean, we've been doing several of these a year for the last, oh, I would say, four or five years now?
Yeah.
And so are we catching up a little bit? Because I know they were, they were in pretty poor shape. We, we were getting far, a ways down, and so are we catching up a little bit on these?
Yeah, I would say the last four or five years has been pretty productive in rehabbing the existing system. There are a lot of brick manholes in the system, and those are the ones that need attention. So, a lot of those are on this project, down, down towards the center of town.
Center of town, okay.
Yep, everything helps, that's for sure.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 4A2 is review of the bids received for the 2021 sewer structure rehabilitation project on May 13, 2021, by the project engineer Cruz Kate N. Nelson.
So you'll see the bid tab you have probably in front of you. We did only receive one bid for this project. I believe some of that was due to a few of the specialty items in the, in the manhole, or, excuse me, the lift station work. So that bid was $124,946, and that came from HydroClean LLC out of Des Moines. The engineer's estimate was $111,830. So, so the, so the little bid was 11% over the estimate. Brian had included in the spec that if, if bids were higher than the budget, that we would adjust, adjust the work to fit the budget. So what we'll probably do is pull out a few of the, few of the manhole repairs to make the budget work, so. We, we do, we haven't necessarily worked directly with these guys before, but we, they do have a good reputation, so I think it'll be good for them to do some work in, in town and see, see what they can do, so.
So what, do you, do you feel those prices are going to be going up with, with the cost of oil and stuff, or would we be better off to maybe finish these projects, this, or the whole project, or?
Actually, the, if you look in the bid tab, you'll see like item number 14 and item number eight, which was replacing some piping in the lift station, and also replacing a lid for one of the, the corn belt lift station. That's pretty specialty work, and so I think that's really what drove the cost up on this project. Otherwise, the lining portion itself is in line with what we thought it'd be, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the bid? To be clear, Ross, you are recommending to move forward with the project, right?
That's correct. We would recommend awarding the bid to HydroClean.
Okay. So we have items 4, 3, or 4A, 3, or 4. I would entertain either a motion to table awarding the contract, or I would entertain a motion for a resolution awarding the contract for the 2021 sewer structure rehabilitation project.
Question, I would, I would motion that we would award it, but do we have to put in with the reduced project size, Don, or being as we're not doing the whole thing, or?
As a change order.
Yep.
Okay, that'll just come with, okay, so then I'll recommend we approve it.
First by Ron, second by George. Any discussion or questions? Just so everyone's clear, to recap what Don and Ron talked about is that to lower the cost of the project, we'll do it through a change order after the full cost is approved. We have a first and second. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Item 4B is a public hearing on the proposed sale of city real property legally described as lots 2 and 3 of the Green Industrial Center, first addition to the City of Spencer Clay County, Iowa, to Doug and Brant Small. I declare the public hearing open. Are there any written comments against?
We have none, Mayor.
Are there any oral comments against? Are there any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing closed. Item 4B1 is a resolution approving the sale and transfer of the city real property legally described as lots 2 and 3 of the Green Industrial Center, first addition to the City of Spencer Clay County, Iowa, to Doug and Brant Small. First by, was that Bill down there?
It's Tom.
First by Tom?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion on this? Questions?
I've got a question for Don.
George.
On, on the agreement of this, the sale order, it appeared to me that it said the, it was going to be sold to the City of Spencer and then to Small, and I wondered why it said that. It looked like a misprint to me on the sale to Spencer.
That's, what you're referring to is, is part of the legal description of the property that's being sold says to the City of Spencer, but that refers to the, the property. So the property, lots 2 and 3 of Green Industrial Center, first addition to the city, is going to be sold to Doug and Brant. So it's, it's, it says what it's supposed to say.
Okay.
I would note, as you probably have, that this resolution is subject to the approval by the Green Industrial Center Design Review Board. I think everybody understands that. The mayor suggested, you know, should this be open-ended? It really shouldn't be, so I put in 90 days to get that accomplished.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 4C is a public hearing on amendment number 2 to the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments against? Have we received any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Do we have any oral comments in favor of? See, none. Declare the public hearing closed. 4C1 is a resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Amendment number 2. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren, I believe.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5, old business. 5A is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 13, Section 4N of the Spencer City Code concerning improvements required in connection with subdivision plat. This is the, with a subdivision plat. This is the second filing.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
Sorry.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6 is new business. 6A is a resolution awarding contract for the 2021 intake replacement project to Corey Jurgens Construction LLC for $59,592. This is a quotation project. First by Tom, second by Bill. Discussion, questions on this? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6B is a resolution awarding contract for the 2021 PCC patching project to Beck Excavating Incorporated for $46,073. It's a quotation project. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by George. Discussion, questions on this? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6C is a resolution awarding contract for the 2021 crack-in joint ceiling project to Midwest Coatings for $43,580. This is a quotation project. First by Lauren. Second by Tracy. Discussion, questions on this item? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6D is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2021 seal coat project with the Road Guy Construction Company out of Yankton, South Dakota, for $42,466.60.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Hey, Mark, maybe you could step forward and, and kind of go through these. These are all road rehabilitation projects for the summer. I know we do these year round, or every year, we, we kind of go through certain ones, and.
Sure. Seal coat mainly is what you're interested in?
Well, seal coat, nice, the crack and joint, I suppose.
Sure. We've recently added the crack and joint ceiling to the capital improvement and maintenance schedule. That's kind of, that's a result of probably an increase in the road use tax. So it's a really good way to use maintenance, or use funds for maintenance projects. So the area that we've identified for the joint crack ceiling project this year will be out around the industrial park. If you've been out there, you've noticed that concrete has got some age with some wide joints, so that's good maintenance to preserve that into the future. The seal coat project is, every year we do that. We try to hit the streets in a five-to-seven-year cycle, so it's just a continuous cycle. We've, we've done some experimenting with some different oils and, and rocks over the years, the stone that goes in with it. We think we have that dialed in pretty close with a different type of oil that's given a better outcome and a better bang for the buck and less tracking. Years ago, we'd used to get some tracking issues when it was warm. It seems to, like everything, technology changes some when we're trying to follow that technology. Anything else on the other projects?
Nope, I appreciate that, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. So we have a first, we have a second. Any other discussion on 6D? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6E is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closure of City Alley in the City of Spencer as requested by the Iowa Project Brewing Company of 316 Grand Avenue on May 22, 2021, and June 27, 2021, for special events. First by George.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Questions or discussion on this item?
I'm just happy to see there's some downtown things going on there, and I'm glad the city can, can do this and close it down, and the chief is on board with this, and glad to hear that they're going ahead with this.
In open disclosure, I should mention my granddaughter.
George, sorry, George, you want to turn your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. In open disclosure, I wanted to disclose that my grand, great-granddaughter is working for them this summer. So, good to get a college student back to Spencer for the summer.
There you go.
Great-granddaughter, all right, George. Congratulations. Any other discussion or questions? Nope, okay. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 7 is the engineer's report. I see at least one in the crowd.
I, I just have a few other quick updates. We do, we do have a good-sized bid letting tomorrow. It's let through the DOT. It's the HMA overlay project on East and West 4th Street. Reminder again, that's from 9th Avenue West over to 5th Avenue East. There are a couple asphalt companies on the plan holders list through the DOT, so we do expect a couple bids, and hopefully that's good and competitive. The other project that lets this week is the airport pavement rehabilitation project, and that's on Friday, so, and we have several plan holders on that also, so. Any questions?
Does this whole fuel crisis thing, you know, since this is at all oil-based, does that affect that type of bid at all, or is that just a little blip to them?
I, I did talk to a few contractors about that, and it sounds like we'll probably be okay with our asphalt oil on this bid. Lots, lots of the guys probably had contracted oil already for a reserve for projects, I think, the way it sounds, so I don't anticipate that being an issue. It's not saying it couldn't be, though, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Item 8 for her last official city manager's report in the City of Spencer, Iowa. The first time you gave a report, it was snowy and cold in January, and now the grass is out, and the flowers are up, and.
Birds are singing.
And we're in an entirely new building.
That's right.
Yes, all right, well, I have a few things. First, I'd, with the nice weather, people are mowing their lawns, and I'd like to remind everyone to not blow your grass into the streets. You're welcome, Mark, for that. And we've had a few committee meetings over the last couple of weeks, so just to provide an overview, the Economic Development Committee met last week and discussed a commercial tax abatement program as well as modifications to the residential tax abatement program. So information on that will be coming to the whole council in the near future. The Finance Committee met this morning and discussed the rocket slides. It'll be a recommendation to fund the remainder of that project out of reserves coming to the council. They did discuss the sewer rate study, and Brian will be getting more information back to them. Let's see here. We've had some inquiries to council members and to staff about the speed limit on Grand Avenue, and I'd just like to remind everyone that the DOT actually sets that. The city doesn't control it, as it is a state highway. Jessica sent out to all of you a draft recruitment plan. Several of you have, have responded, have commented, but if you do have additional comments, please get them to her by tomorrow so that we can schedule a committee of the whole meeting, hopefully for this coming Thursday, for you all to discuss and decide how you want to move forward with that. And then the last thing that I have is, well, not the last thing. Second to last thing is, congratulations to all the Eric graduates. Spencer's graduation was this past weekend. Okoboji is this coming weekend, and it's fun to see all of that excitement in the community. And I guess my last comment is, I just want to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity for the last three and a half years, and all of you for the opportunity to work with you, and to the community for giving me this opportunity and welcoming our family so graciously three and a half years ago. As we've started packing up our house, it's, it's looking a little bare, and I'm reminded of what it was like when we moved into it, and some of you will remember that my family was still in South Dakota. They were there for about five months when I was here, and that was kind of a, a weird time and kind of lonely, and there were so many of you that welcomed me and helped fill that void while they were finishing school and jobs, and I will be forever grateful for those friendships, and thank you, I'm done talking.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda? Comments?
If they, if they do have any, sorry.
If anybody does have questions about the speed limit, they talk to Tracy, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Ward 3, yes. All right. Thank you. George has something here.
Were those complaints about the speed limit being too high or too low?
Um, well, just some concerns that traffic was maybe moving too quickly. The police department has done a good job of, of maintaining traffic control in there. There's some specific properties where they've placed the speed, the electronic speed sign. I mean, it's not an unusual comment, and it's just good, I think, to remind people that we don't actually set it. But we do pass those comments along to the DOT and work with them if, if we feel that there's an issue, so.
I think there'd be more complaints about the train being at the crossing at 7 o'clock and 12 noon most of the day.
Well, that's a railroad issue, and.
I know it is. It's also in Ward 3.
Uh, yeah. Ward 3 has got all the challenges right now. Two, two, yeah.
Anything else, George?
No, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. Item 9 is the mayor's report. Just two items I'd like to focus on tonight. The first, while Amanda is leaving and her work begins, as she winds down here, it'll begin in Watertown in the future. Our work begins in the transition. I've spent a couple meetings with Jessica and Amanda to make sure that the process that we'll present in the next couple of weeks will be set up correctly, go smoothly. Just to remind you again, to, Jessica asked for feedback on her plan. I believe the deadline she put in there was tomorrow, was to close the business or so tomorrow. So if you do have, if you have not reviewed it, please review it. If you have comments, please get them to her so that we can start the committee of the whole meeting off, kind of all on the same footstep. Also, Don has reminded us that while Brian is the deputy city manager, we do need to take council action to appoint him as the interim, official interim city manager, so you'll see that coming up in the work schedule as well. And the second item I would like to talk about is, I received a lot of contact, whether it was via social media or my email or my phone, about the tragic loss of life of Alex Lee Wright on his motorcycle at the Menards intersection. He's not unfortunately the only person who has had a fatality in that intersection, and what I want the public to know and his family to know, some of his family members have reached out to me. We take everything seriously, especially when it comes to public safety, and things are happening. Your voices are heard. Representative, State Representative Megan Jones and myself have had a discussion. She has shared with me that the Department of Transportation on the state side is very aware. The regional director is aware and has been contacted by several people. That particular intersection and stretch is a state highway, and while we don't have the jurisdiction and authority as the City of Spencer to control or modify that intersection, we do have the right to advocate for the safety of all of our citizens and the people who do come and visit our town, and that intersection probably has the most diversity of people not from the area. Menards has a pretty large draw, and so it's critically important that we work with the state and push the state of Iowa to study that. I'd like everybody to know that our chief of police also, who is here tonight, Mark Orburton, takes it very seriously. He has reached out and not only requested that the state of Iowa does an investigation and research into that intersection, but there's another intersection close to there, the Menard, or the McDonald's Walmart intersection can be fairly dangerous as well. Same type of scenario, that's a two-state highway, or it's, I guess it's just 71 at that point. Again, we don't have control over that intersection, but we're going to advocate and push for a safety study on that intersection as well because there's been some close calls and accidents there. So we, we greatly appreciate everyone reaching out. This is how it's supposed to function in government. We want you to know that we, we hear you, we listen to you, and we're going to move forward, and we pray for his family and the family of the people in the other vehicle and all of the people who witnessed the accident. I know I've read and were contacted by a lot of people who just witnessed it. And so it's our goal to have a safe community. It's our goal to keep forward and moving where we need to move and improve, and this, I think, is an area in which we can focus on and have improvements. And so I just wanted to offer some public comment tonight on that scenario to let you know that we are paying attention, we are. We are working both locally and at the state level, so. With that, I would entertain any questions, if anyone has any? Thank you, Tom. Item ten, council and committee reports.
Yes. So we currently have a joint Public Works and Finance Committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday, May twentieth, at five-thirty PM to discuss the IGL storm sewer project. We would like to schedule immediately following that a committee of the whole meeting to review the recruitment plan and, and start working on that process. So we'd put a six-thirty start time on that, and we'll meet in the committee room. Louise Conference Room, as Historic Preservation will be doing one of their speaker series in this space that night. The Long-Term Planning Committee will be meeting on May twenty-seventh at five-thirty PM. They'll hear a presentation from Burglum and Cram on the design guidelines, and we'll provide a recommendation to council on that. And we'll also discuss some minor modifications to the sidewalk cafe regulation and begin a discussion on food trucks. And then the right, next regular city council meeting is June seventh at six-thirty.
Thank you, Amanda. Item eleven, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, other business opportunity to address the council before Brian does his presentation? Would anyone like the platform, the microphone?
I believe I heard that your daughter qualified for state?
Yes, yep. Morgan will be throwing a shot put along with a whole lot of other athletes from across the state of Iowa, a lot of Spencer kids as well. So just like to wish everybody good luck, safe travels, and, you know, the coaches and athletes. It's a stressful time, but it's what they work for all year, so.
Thanks for mentioning Spencer, too. I heard there were a lot of kids that qualified, so.
Yeah, in fact, I believe the Spencer girls won their, should have been their tenth, but they didn't have it last year, but their ninth straight district title in the last ten-year stretch. So they really have a powerhouse of a program going. And of course, on the boys' track side locally, we had a school record broken by Brogan Sire in the shot put this year, so wish him good luck as well.
Sounds like all the spring sports are doing really well.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give you, everyone, the council and then the public, a brief update over the last numerous months, I guess. It's been longer than I, since about September, we've been working on some updates to our software and some offerings of what we can do. One of those is ready to deploy out, and so, let me... Figure out how to get rid of...
No pressure, Brian.
Very simple. We'll end that meeting. And so I'm hoping tomorrow, our, on our webpage, the city's webpage, spenceriowacity.com, you'll see a new icon down here in the menu bar. It's called the Citizen Portal. That's going to replace what used to say, "Report a Problem and Pay a Bill," because both those functions are now part of this new portal. So you click on that. You're going to be taken to a site. This is what it is, and from here, there's multiple different functions you're going to be able to do. You can pay, if you, if we invoice you for services, you can look up, pay your accounts receivable account from here. If you have a license through the city, a business license, whether that's plumbing, electrical, that you just register for. Blanking on some of the other ones, Teresa. They'll be able to monitor their license from here and re-register. There's construction permitting and inspection. So while you currently can't apply for your permit through the system yet, once you've applied and once a permit's been issued, you can log in, make your payments on those permits through the site. If it comes down to it, you can schedule inspections. So when you want to schedule our inspectors to come out, you get the option of either morning or afternoon, and then we will get back to you as to the specific time that they can be out. But at least you can kind of go on there and inspect that. There's a miscellaneous payments and services, so where you used to go online, and if you have a, if you've gotten a speeding ticket or need to pay for your lost animal, or later right now from the police department, you can make those payments through here. And then also, right now, we just have the two, so Police Department, you just click and pick the form. If you want to, if you order case reports or CDs and need to make those payments, you would do that through here online. The other one for solid waste right now is if you want to order your dumpster for special delivery or disposal tag. So if you're, didn't want to go, if you have TVs, all that stuff that you usually would buy a tag for at City Hall, you can buy those through here. The last one is share a concern. So it used to be the reported problem. If there's, a lot of this is geared towards the nuisance only. So you just click in here. There's a, over here on the online services, you can share a concern. At this point, a lot of these services, you do have to create an account because it, especially like the AR and building permits, it's all tied. So you'd, you'd register your first time here, log in, and then you'd be able to fill out a complaint. We, obviously, city staff would get who the contact people are, but no one else can see that. You can share concerns, upload, I think, pictures and stuff if you need to, and then staff can get back to you. The first time you would log in for, oops, an accounts receivable payment. You're going to, again, be have it to register. You'll also need to know your city account number, which should be on your latest invoice. You can quick pay, which doesn't need to log in. If you just have one bill you want to pay, but if you want to see your history, you can log in. You'll also need to know the last amount that you paid to us. So if it's been a while, contact City Hall, and we can get you your last payment amount. It's just a, a way the system does is a verification to make sure that the account you're trying to attach your email and stuff to is actually your AR account. But like I said, as soon as our website changes, which I will see, this is in draft mode. It should be out there. I would hope tomorrow that this will then take you to the new online site for that. And again, like with AR, it's going to be helpful. You can see the last year's history of invoices that we billed you, et cetera. If you want to know what a charge is for or why we're sending you an invoice, you could log in there, pay it. Again, all those other services are, are available right now. We're working on... There, I think down the road, there will be a way to actually apply for permits through the system, but that's not quite there. We will have an online permitting process coming out here later this summer that will take it and make it more online, but not directly tied here. As the mayor mentioned, we are, we will be in the next couple of weeks or so launching a Parks and Rec module and program online that will allow you to go online and buy your pool passes, register for pool passes or golf passes, also make campground reservations online and shelter reservations, et cetera, and that. So, and classes, if they offer, like if the yoga that last year, or I know the police has a fund run tentatively coming up sometime this summer. Now, the registration for that will be through that, so we hope to release that out to the public in the coming weeks as well. So.
Brian, is there a link? Is there a link to SMU on the city so that can, people?
I think so.
Looking for utilities?
Yeah, we have a, there is a link to SMU somewhere on here. We have different links. Just don't know where it's at right now.
Well, I didn't mean to...
Yeah, no, I...
I understand.
I know we have one.
Is it under residents? Yeah, it's right down there at the bottom. Spencer Municipal Utilities.
There it is.
See it?
Good job, Amanda.
Yeah. I thought we had one, so, yeah.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
So Brian, Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
If you have, if you're paying for a permit and you've got an invoice with an account number on it, and you later want to order a dumpster, do you, once you sign in, everything that you get billed by the city is under the same account number or not?
No. Hang on one second, Bill.
So each time you'd have to go in and...
No, your, your login will be the same every time, yes.
Okay, so you don't have to have a different login for...
Correct.
Parks versus...
The account number will be different.
Yeah.
Right. You, once you log in, once you create an account here...
Then the system knows the person that...
Since I guinea pigged this with my, my address.
Hope you don't have too many traffic violations on it.
It doesn't show that, but... Careful, put the other hand in it. So under accounts receivable, you're going to see here, once I've attached my account, you're going to be able to log in, and if, it's going to tell you your current balance, and if you want to, or if you had a balance, you could pay it. Again, if you logged in, it's been a while since I've ordered a dumpster, but I'll share that with the world, I guess. You're going to see this type of information. It's the same information we see when we look up your AR account.
Okay.
So you would have that. If I had a construction permit, once we've issued your permit, we have to attach your permit to your name, so until we've done that. And your contractors, if they want to be able to, so once a contractor can sign up for an account, and then we can attach, so Pixel Electric, if they have five different account permits throughout the town, they can sign in and see all of the permits that they're attached to as well, so they could pay theirs just from Pixel Electric's account or whatever. You're going to come out here, you're going to see your project. You can click on it, and it'll take it to you, you to a screen. Or Capricottage, whoever, Midwest Mechanical, Hanson's. Help me think of contractors so I don't skip over anyone. You're going to see this. You'll have over here the ability to pay your fees. You can hear, come in and schedule an inspection. Again, it's going to give you the option. Do you want to schedule it in the morning or the afternoon? We'll confirm it on our inspector's calendar and get back to you as to when that is, et cetera, so. But yeah, all that, all that will take one login to here. It's just, yeah. Right, you don't have to have multiple logins, but, yep.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for Brian? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan. Second by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting adjourned. There it is.